Good evening. It is six P M on Tuesday, November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. And hereby called order, this meeting of the Westboro Select Board. If you're willing and able, please rise to the further divisions.
My further divisions, to the right of the United States of America, and to your republic, which is the same as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll note that the agenda we're following this evening is posted on the town website. And I believe it's been scrolling by Westboro TV. At the top of the agenda is a list of openings on town boards and committees. As always, you know, a reminder that there are nearly four hundred volunteer positions on town boards and committees. It's a way to actively participate in local government, set the direction and be involved. So if you have any interest in serving and helping the community, find, pick your passion, check out the list, contact Town Hall, and we'll match you with a committee where your energy, your insight, and ideas can be put to good use to benefit the town and the community.
Better than the dating service.
It's, I hope so. Well, I guess, yes. You didn't speak into the mic.
Oh, it's better than the dating service.
I guess so. Okay. I wanted people to know I was laughing with you, not at you. On that note, next on our agenda is open forum. At this point, I believe we have, I'm one individual. It's like we're a member of what she would like to make a statement.
Thank you for the time to speak, Mr. Chairman. I speak tonight as an individual citizen in regards to our recent discussion and vote on Indigenous Peoples' Day, its replacement of Columbus Day. I remind the community that I'm in support, in support of cultural celebrations and the wonderful community opportunities that they grant. I would like to thank the diversity and inclusion committee in this board for the work that they did on this topic and the meaningful meetings that were had. I would also like to thank those that sent kind words my way, even if they disagreed with my vote. They respected the process and the transparent nature of our open meetings. I did not run for personal gain, but rather to be supportive of the entire community. That said, I was not naive running for the board position. And recently was reminded by last week's trilogy of the great American Colin Powell, or he was quoted stating, "Public service comes at a cost if you're willing to do the work." I knew and was, was warned multiple times that I will face votes in which I will not be able to appease many, and sometimes perhaps most. My response to that was that I would do my homework and vote my conscience every time during what I think is equitable and best for our community. However, as a result of this vote, I have been deeply and publicly bullied and insulted by being called a white supremacist, something that as a member of a family, that is fifty percent minority, I do not take lightly and am saddened by. I lived overseas in the South, where I was often a minority before I moved to Westboro thirty-eight years ago. I can assure the community that I am not a white supremacist or racist of any kind, and in fact, believe that my vote highlights that position and that I will never support a motion that respects one human difference over another. I denounce false supremacy of any kind and believe that our culture's prosperity depends on robust equally protected civil, civility, which is the basis of Section One of the Constitution's Fourteenth Amendment, also known as the equal protection clause. I said at our July twentieth meeting that I could not understand how the motion presented was diverse and inclusive and was eager to hear how it was. And over the last few months, no matter how long and hard I listened, or how many messages I received, of which the vast majority were opposed, I was offered no reasonable cause for prejudice one culture over another. Let's do our best to end the corrosive vitriol of my, my way and get out of the way absolutism. I hope that all step out of the stew of social media echo chambers where hate speech and bullying thrive and choose civility by listening with kindness, speaking with kindness, and acting with kindness. Only then can we truly move forward in an inclusive, positive way that represents all. I think that our first agenda topic tonight, the town seal, is an excellent example of how we can have civil discussion. Finally, I'm reminded, I'll remind our community that I have been and will continue to be available to all through email, phone, or in person to listen and learn across all topics that impact our community. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who wishes to address the select board for open forum? Very much seen known, I'm on our agenda. Our representatives from the town seal committee present available. Excellent. Is that all of the triage system?
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
So my name is Nick Argento, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and present an update on the progress of the Westboro Town Seal Review Committee. I'm co-chair of the Town Seal Review Committee along with Ala Baranowski, Baranowski, pardon me, and I'm here today to present a brief report on the activity of the committee to date. Our committee includes myself and Ala, and in addition to that Jenna Casello, Ian Delahanty, Dan Lambert, Wendy Mickel, and Eric Wade. The town moderator, John Arnold, appointed this committee, and since its formation, the committee has met four, five times. We've elected co-chairs, Ala and me, and we have a secretary, Ian Delahanty. The committee's charge is threefold, and I'm just going to restate what the committee's charge is for the purposes of both the, the select board and also for anyone listening or watching. So our charge is to review the history of the town seal in Westboro, to consider whether or not the town should adopt a new town seal after a public process that shall include a consultation with diverse group of stakeholders, as well as holding multiple public forums. And then third, to recommend whether or not the town should adopt a new seal, and if yes, to recommend a process for creating a new town seal. To fulfill the first charge, the committee met with the town's local his, history librarian, Anthony Weber, who I know also addressed this board. And we listened to his presentation about the history of the town seal and other town seals, and the Westboro town seal itself. Wendy Mickel, who is also the town clerk and a member of this committee, provided information on imagery, history, and the usage of the town seal here in Westboro. To fulfill the second charge, the committee has planned the first listening session to be held at the Forbes Building on November fifteenth at seven P M. And the committee has developed content to present at that meeting, a slideshow presentation. And we've also developed and we're in the process of implementing a marketing plan to advertise about this meeting, and the content for that handout for the participants to take home after the session, and for questions from the initial discussion. In order to include residents who might be able to attend, who might be unable to attend the meeting in person, we've added on the poster materials around town and posted on the town website, an invitation to submit remarks through email, or those remarks can also be dropped off at the town clerk's office here at thirty-four West Main Street. And those remarks will be read at the listening session. We've agreed on a format in which we alternate remarks by in-person participants with those who have sent their comments to the committee directly. Now, we've begun to consider a list of diverse stakeholders to consult separately from the listening sessions, and we plan to hone this list at our meeting on December second. But among the groups that we discussed as being stakeholders are town employees who wear the town seal as an insignia and who use it daily, racial justice groups in the town, the interfaith clergy council, related religious community leaders, and the school system. So those are my brief remarks to give you an update. I would appreciate, and the committee itself would appreciate, your ideas on who else you think that we should consider to be stakeholders in this matter. You have, I believe, Sealer gave you copies of a poster that has on it some questions that our committee is considering, and we'd ask people to come to the, to the first listening session to think about these questions, and also if they want to comment on them, they can. Among those questions are, does the imagery on the current town seal reflect the values and the ideals of our community? When you think of Westboro, what symbols come to mind as representative of our community? And then finally, based on this community's charge, this committee's charge, if the recommendation is to change the seal, what are some ideas for the process of designing it, as well as new elements to include in it? So that's what we're doing. If I, and I, I recognize that you have a very full agenda tonight, but I'd welcome if there's, if there's some group that you think we should specifically reach out to, I'd welcome that. You can also comment and send it to the Westboro Town Seal Committee through email, and that, and all of you have that email at the bottom of that poster.
I just want to thank the committee for the comprehensive packet we received. It was great to see some imagery from other communities throughout Massachusetts and to go through and read all the meeting minutes. That was extremely helpful, you know, to prepare for your presentations.
Yeah, and that's, that came from the town clerk's office, from Wendy Mickel, who's been very helpful in trying to provide information. John Arnold, who's the town moderator who appointed this committee, has been very, very helpful with us. And just, and, and, you know, obviously, our meetings, much like your meetings, are recorded. Anyone can find them on, on YouTube. But this committee has worked quite well together. We can agree, we disagree. We've had robust discussions so far, and we're very excited about trying to gather information from the community about what their opinion is about this, and we'll find out more and we'll know more certainly after November fifteenth. And then one last point I should have mentioned is that we're also planning a Zoom session in mid, in mid-December. And then from there, we're, we will look at other methods of, of trying to gather information. But, so we, we have taken seriously the notion of multiple forums. So again, I, I welcome any questions or comments if you have, have them.
Ian? First, I'll just comment and echo what Shelby said. Information is great. Mr. Delahanty, fellow Ian, his minutes are great to read, so you may sign up for other things. But very comprehensive, really cut the feel of the discussion, which to your point, I think shows the committee working well. And a thank you to you and to Al for stepping up as co-chairs.
Yeah, thank you.
It's important. I appreciate that. The one thing, and I don't know if I heard it or not, but when you're asking for constituencies or whatever, one of the things, I apologize if you did mention that, but one of the things to be here sometimes, like for this one, it was great seven to nine P M. A lot of times seniors may not come out, especially now that we're in daylight savings time, so it might be something to think about potentially doing something during or over and at the senior center, sometimes lunches or afternoons kind of working with the staff there. That might be a way to reach out to them to get input for them.
Yeah, thanks.
That works for, better for them.
Yes, yes, thank you. And, but specifically program of the senior center, I'll, I'll bring that back to the committee when we meet on December second. But just, we are quite concerned about being able to reach multiple constituencies in the town, and we've had two discussions about this so far. And one of our points will be at the December second meeting to kind of zero in on what groups and what, what other times besides just a seven to nine meeting as we're doing on November fifteenth. And it's why we decided also to reach out by, by having people submit comment through email or by dropping it off here at the town hall. So, yes, so thank you very much for that, Ian. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I do have one question. So first, I actually watched the video at your last meeting, and very much appreciated the discussion about, you know, a seven to nine meeting, who can make it, who can, how do we get voices? And I, as someone who's responsible for keeping time of the agenda, keeping the challenge, particularly if there's a lot of input, getting people in the meeting and getting the input from people who can't make the meeting but want, you know, their voices heard. I'm wondering if there's been a consideration of thought about providing a mechanism where people can put their comments online and they be immediately available for everyone to see. So, you know, it's similar to submitting by email, but then you wouldn't have to necessarily read them into the record. It's take that time to do that, to be heard. It seemed to work very well with the Fort Valhalla Trust Working Group and with the Master Plan Advisory Committee.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Maybe way to do that without expense. You know, there's some free tools that can let them do that as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Find your assistance, but that is, is a suggestion, just to help manage, you know, the level of input that you want to receive in a way that still provides for productive listening sessions and events and conversations.
I'll, I'll bring it back to the committee. And yeah, thank you for that, Ms. Idenberg, too, and, and Ms. Johnson. Thank you for those suggestions. They're really very helpful. Anything else?
I would maybe just throw in, you know, although there's not a lot of town voting members reaching out possibly to the high school. I know that the kids were actually involved with reading the last town seal, and I think their input could actually be invaluable to this process as well.
In our last meeting, we had, we actually did talk about that a bit, and especially where this current town seal is an amalgamation of some submissions from high school students in nineteen sixty-seven, we thought, yes, that would be a really, an instructive way to be able to solicit input from, from that group. The other thing is, we also thought it would be a good way to ignite perhaps some interest in local town government. So we're, we will do that, and I, I just made a note of it here, and I'll bring that back to the committee also. So thank you, Mr. Q. I appreciate it.
I guess I should have said I also thank the committee for the work you do, because I know it's not an easy topic, and it's, it's great to hear that there's some good discussion going on and positive progress in the discussion. So thank you very much for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Welch. It, it, the, really, the, this committee so far, we've, we, we can disagree, but we, we're generally pretty respectful of each other. And, and, and it's, and we are, we feel free to be able to express opinion. I believe that's the case. I'm, I'm one of the co-chairs, so I assume that that's the case. But, but so far that has been, that has been very much the case. And we did work quite well together to be able to get to the point of scheduling this meeting on November fifteenth. We did, we started doing this back in early October, as far as trying to plan a meeting. So in the world of town government, as you can imagine, this, this has been very quick to be able to put this together in a, in a positive way. And we're hopeful, we have, we feel like we have excellent energy right now with this. So we're hopeful that'll continue, but of course, maybe we'll get a snowstorm and that won't happen.
Don't say that.
So, so again, thank you so, are there other questions? Are there other questions? Again, I don't want to stand in, in front of your agenda, because I know you have quite a lengthy agenda.
This was great, Ian.
All right. Thank you so much, Peter. Thank you very much.
Moving on to the next item, our, our agenda is a site plan overview for one sixty-five Flanders Road. If the proponents could step forward and reminder to adjust the lights so you can, not only we can hear you, but the folks at home.
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Luke DiStefano with Boulder Engineering, here on behalf of E G America and their property located at one sixty-five Flanders Road. You probably know it as the Cumberland Farms Distribution Center. It's now the E G America Distribution Center since Cumberland Farms is acquired by Euro Garage, E G, about a year ago, maybe a little longer than that. The project before you tonight for an overview is a pretty straightforward one. And again, you do have a full agenda, so I'll keep the presentation brief. As you can see either on your screens or on the large screen behind you, it's basically a parking lot expansion. With the acquisition from E G, and also as we emerge from the COVID-nineteen pandemic, this facility is in need, desperate need of additional parking spaces. So this proposal calls for the construction of a parking lot basically in the center of a property that would basically allow for ninety-seven new parking spaces. There's also some minor modifications being made to the accessible parking in front of the building to account for an additional two handicap parking spaces, which are needed when we increase the total capacity of parking on site. When you look at the zoning table, we're still compliant with parking. We're compliant with green space, minimum green space regulations. So the overall impacts to the site are minor. There are a minor increase, or there is a minor increase in impervious cover. It's about thirty-nine thousand square feet or point eight percent of the overall lot. That's being mitigated by some improvements we're making to the existing stormwater management facilities on site, basically pre-treated via a country soil drainage system, which ultimately discharges back into the main drainage detention basin that's on site today, which ultimately flows off to the east and ultimately under the turnpike into where it's going. There's some minor lighting upgrades proposed to basically light the parking lot, some landscaping improvements, as you can see from the rendering. And apart from that, the only other substantial modification to the site would be the addition of a five-foot-wide sidewalk that would connect the new parking facility basically back to the main parking area at the front entrance of the building. And with that, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Put it up to the board. Any questions or concerns about the project?
I think you said one question was kind of our comments from other town departments and from conservation above this being a zone to aquifer, or this was allowed, and I think it put it to Fred's, this old enforcement officer. I didn't see anything his that said there was an issue there and he was working through things, but I'm not sure as to you or to Christie as well, if there's been a resolution on that piece. And I guess if not, it would just be something to send after the planning board if they have.
I haven't, I haven't heard anything beyond what you have in your packet, so you can certainly send that along. The, the planning board also gets these comments, so, yeah.
I'm assuming it's, I'm assuming it's fine because Fred said things are progressing, but just since it was noted in our package.
Sure.
And we will coordinate with the Conservation Commission. We do have some minor modifications being made to a very small portion of floodplain, and we are doing work within one of the buffer zones, but the vast majority of the improvements are upwind and outside of any of the existing jurisdictional areas on the property.
Yeah, I guess my question is more from the planning board in regards to how does this, how does, how does this align to our master plan in regards to, you know, driving sustainable issues through our town? I think thirty-nine thousand square feet of blacktop. I understand it's necessary and needed for the, for the business. It makes sense, and certainly appreciate the additional E G parking. I'm just curious about, you know, that's obviously what they're trying to mitigate warming, you know, warming issues. So my question would be to the planning board as to how, how do they assess whether this is within expectations of master plan?
Yeah, so we would send it as a comment to, to just make sure that it's aligned with the expectations of the master plan related to the system. Yeah.
Shelby?
Sean? I'm good. Thank you, Ken. Ian stole my thunder about conservation issue.
All set. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. And for the folks at home, hundreds of pages of materials. That we have the opportunity to review on the project. So, thank you. If you have eyes.
Next on the agenda is a class one dealer license for Monroe tractor at ninety-seven Turnpike Road.
Do you have a deal with Monroe tractor? And we're applying for the class one license to sell constraint, case construction equipment, new, used, and repair units there at ninety-seven Turnpike.
Excellent. Would you like to, for us and for the public, which I, I know you're operating out of the space currently?
Yes.
Just recently moved in?
Yep.
So you moved from Auburn, I believe.
Moved from Worcester.
Worcester, okay.
So we're gonna be selling case construction equipment. Formerly, years ago, I worked for Good Allens Suns tractor, so it'll be basically the same thing that we'll be selling, case construction equipment. So we've, I guess my career started here in Westboro with Case, and now it's back again to Westboro with Case again. So looking forward to that. Looking forward to the, definitely the better exposure on Route Nine versus where we were in Worcester on Route Twenty, kind of tucked in the back, you know. So hoping to be able to do the Case Agricultural Tractors as well there as time goes on. But it'll be all backos, lobos, dozes, excavators, all that type of stuff, doing the repairs, and selling parts as well.
Okay, very cool. I started following the Monroe tractor on Facebook.
Oh, nice.
Some cool equipment.
Oh, yeah.
Things I will never need to buy.
Yeah, especially the big ag tractors out in upstate New Yorks. They're pretty, they're pretty fun.
I am a nerd, very much so.
Hey, you can't beat those ag tractors, you know, articulated quad track tractors. I got a chance to drive one one time at a training facility. It was pretty impressive. Probably one of the best things I've ever driven, you know, so.
Okay, cool. So are there any questions from the board?
I guess my only question was to Christie. I, I don't think I saw in the packet any comments from fire and building departments. Did I miss that?
Pat had no comment.
Yeah, Pat had no comment. I'm sorry, police and building departments.
So I actually think that comment about the aquifer was, that comment about the aquifer was, yeah, was for this one.
Right. So I understated to the last one. I apologize for that.
So we won't send that along.
There is a comment from Jeff from Wishes.
Okay.
Page.
Scrolling. Oh, yeah. Page.
Page two fifty-nine.
Page two fifty-nine. Yeah.
I would just say excited to be here. Appreciate bringing business to Westboro and back to being connected to the town. So that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
And then, you might be saying it's still a family-owned business?
Yes, it is. Yeah. Yeah, not very many of the construction dealers are family-owned anymore. Just like Schmidt Equipment just recently sold to a national company. So it's very few of us now.
I'm excited to have it in town, so.
Yeah, thank you. Glad to be here.
I'd like a motion to grant the class one dealers license to Monroe tractor and Implement Company, Inc. at ninety-seven Turnpike Road. Conditional on the car counts as listed in the application and compliance with all comments received by town departments.
Second that. Moved and seconded. Any final comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing, hearing none. All in favor? Motion passes unanimously, five zero, five being present. Thank you very much, and welcome to Westboro.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Welcome back personally. Yes. Okay, so the next joint, item on the agenda is an Explore Post eighty-five program presentation. We are actually going to pass that over, and they will be joining us at our next meeting, so that their student leadership will have an opportunity to participate in the presentation process. They're actually at their monthly post meeting right now in conflict with us tonight. But I was asked to relay that But I was asked to relay that the new incarnation of the program is up and running. There are currently eight members who are actively involved with the Post and the Fire Academy with the Westboro Fire Department, which involves members of the leadership and firefighting team in Westboro as well as a firefighter from Southborough, providing hands-on training and education and life skills development. This work is happening most Tuesday evenings and on periodic Saturdays as well. So we'll do that and, but we'll get a more detailed presentation at our next meeting. So next on the agenda is the proposal from the Veterans Advisory Board about hometown hero banners. Please step forward, introduce yourself, make sure we can hear you on microphones, that's great.
Well, in keeping with the prior speakers, I recognize a very full agenda, so we'll keep the presentation under ninety minutes.
I'd be short for you.
Good evening. I'm Jim Tepper. Other members of our task force with me tonight are Patrick.
Tracy.
I'm blocking. Paul Horgan and our newly elected Secretary of the Board, Elijah O'Brien, a member of your Police Department. We're glad to have her. We thank you for the time and appreciate you hearing us out. I think you all have a full proposal and had a chance to look at that. But as an overview, this program seeks to honor the Westboro veterans with picture banners hung throughout downtown. The initial program will be funded by sponsors, family, and friends. And we're seeking to provide appropriate recognition from Memorial Day to Veterans Day. Participation in the program is going to be open to all honorably discharged Westboro veterans as well as active-duty military members. This list includes veterans who died in service, retired veterans, retired deceased veterans, honorably discharged veterans, and active-duty military. The board will be sending correspondence to veterans on all available lists of Westboro veterans to solicit participation. Program is going to be widely shared through various media outlets and we'll list this on our website and our social media pages. In order to provide proper and respectful recognition to our veterans, we're requesting to display the hometown banner, banners, hometown heroes banners from May fifteenth to November fifteenth annually. As there are limited number of spots to hang banners in town, we will rotate them annually as needed. We plan to launch the program as soon as approval is made. And we have plans to hang the first banners in time for Memorial Day two thousand twenty-two. Initially, we'll target forty banners. As the demand develops, we'll work on a second phase to utilize the national grid poles as we see being used in a number of neighboring towns. We do anticipate this to be a very popular program. The banner dimensions are eighteen by thirty-seven and a half, the exact size specified by Chris at the DPW for use on the existing black poles downtown. If we get to the national grid poles, then we will get additional brackets and we may modify that size, but that's would be phase two. The costs, the cost of this program are gonna be borne by, as I said, sponsors, friends, family. The cost of each banner is gonna be a hundred dollars. The board has taken the responsibility of providing and replacing any damaged banners and brackets through sponsoring activities. Going forward, this is key, we hope that the town of Westboro will participate and support this program. At the appropriate time, we'll come back with a request for some funding in that direction. We thank you for your time and in advance, we thank you for your approval. I'll open it to questions and clearly members of the task force can join me for that.
Christie?
So I just, we actually recently amended the banner policy. So just as a reminder, typically a banner proposal would just come to me for my approval. The reason that it's really before you at this point is because the, the request is for longer than the ninety days, which is in the policy. Some of the other points of the, of the program, you know, I'd like to talk to you guys about a little bit, but we, I think we can do that offline. Because really, your approval tonight is more about the, the length of time that the banners are on the poles.
Okay, thank you. Sean?
I was, a few weeks ago, I was in Bridgewater and, and they have this program and I was very impressed by what they've done down there. It is, you know, quite an upgrade to their downtown, I believe, and says a lot about the character of their town. So I'm really looking forward to this program in general, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
In the spirit of not repeating everything, we probably will be sent, I'm just gonna say ditto to what Sean said, very supportive of the program.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I guess the question in front of us is the ninety days that's in our policy or longer is something that I talked to Mr. Tepper about too is a question for him. And, you know, the, the request is in front of us for May fifteen, November fifteen. I'm supportive of that based on, on what we've seen used. I think we have a lot of, we put the American flags, banners up for a lot of times. I think we've used it for the three-hundredth anniversary. I'm not sure that we've had others.
Not yet.
Besides that, so, um, yeah, I think this is a great thing. I agree with what Sean said. I've seen these in numerous communities and it really is a, it's something that's, that's pretty special and does, does show kind of well on the town. I think we should, it shows well for the town in support of our veterans, both past and present, as you, as you mentioned. So personally, I'm supportive of that and be supportive of approval there. I think one thing that was noted, I think Christie said you can do it, is, I mean, as you go to phase two, national grid, I'm not sure that we have control over that. I think that's outside of our.
We've had preliminary conversations with Chris and he indicates that they can support that and we'll just take the town to support that. We'll have the conversation with Christie.
Yeah, I think there's a few, that's one of the things that we can talk about before you finalize.
That's phase two, you know, what's gonna take baked first before we start eating.
Yeah, great to see you, Mr. Tepper and the whole committee. It's fantastic. I'm, I'm really glad to see this coming forward. I too have seen it elsewhere in other towns and as a son of a Vietnam vet, it's great to see the recognition because I think so many vets don't always feel the recognition. So I'm, I'm happy about this and excited to support it. Actually, Ian already just answered a question I had in regards to what other banners, frequency of banners, banner requests we get, so I think.
It's, it's, it's a new program. It's really a new policy that we have, so, you know, the, I know that the Rotary is looking to take advantage of that related to the winter lights. And so we haven't received any other requests to this.
So I understand though that ninety days was intended to chunk the year into four pieces to allow for other community postings to be posted. I'm not sure if there's a differentiation need between the banner out here in front of Town Hall versus the Post.
There is. So, so the, the banner out here, I think it's two or three weeks it can hang up to. The light pole banners are up to ninety days.
And that makes sense to me.
Move ahead.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to be clear about my support. I'm very supportive of this, but I do think that it should be within the construct of our current policy of ninety days. So that would be shorter than what is requested. I think we have a new banner poli- policy. We are, I do, I do think that there's an opportunity for our banners to be utilized more. And I think that as we start to see this program, the Rotary Winter Lights, those banners will be going up shortly. I think other organizations, I've heard Cultural Council has interest in them. So I think being that they are a town device mechanism for promoting town events and spirit, I would be supportive of starting this program within ninety days consistent with our policy.
I, I tend to agree with that, in part because it's a new program. We don't know how many organizations want to do it. I guess I would also add that if the banners go up on May fifteenth, we can look at a certain point of time if no one has requested to use the poles. June to August, starting August, that the time for the banners could, you know, could be extended. If there's not a request for the next ninety days, we could certainly extend the banners. But I'm hesitant to make a half-year commitment that's in perpetuity here or set that expectation.
Hi, good evening, folks. I'm gonna join my colleague here, Jim Tepper. Jim, if you don't mind, I'm just gonna, these aren't really built for me. They need to be raised up a little bit. So, nice to see everyone this evening. So I totally understand the reasoning behind limiting the banners up to the ninety-day timeline. That being said, like we've already discussed and is in the documentation, I think this is a really great thing for the town. Aesthetically, these are excellent. It really ignites, you know, interest in veterans from our youth all the way up to our elderly. Now, with respect to the timeframe, we really believe that, that Memorial Day to Veterans Day time period is really important. It's the best time of the year and we are more than willing to adjust that if another organization, as Ms. Marshall pointed out, you know, needs that space. And I know this is a new program, but we would really stress that we would really like that, that Memorial Day to Veteran Day period. So, Paul, anything else?
I only have three short points. One, since the Veterans Advisory Board is a town board, we feel like there should be some priority there. Secondly, it's, it's a, it's gonna be a lot of effort to do this and some cost. And we feel the timeframe from Memorial Day to Veterans Day gives emphasis to the program and makes it worthwhile. And if we take them down at ninety days, it's gonna be, I think the DPW is involved. We feel it's time that we're rather not see go to waste. But most of all, it's, it's a great program. It's high interest to the veteran community in town. I think we have just five, five hundred and ninety veterans that are on our list, but their families and the, they've expressed a lot of interest in this. So we're, we're really interested in that timeframe. And obviously, we think it's a great program. It's gonna be hard to put to, it's gonna be, take a lot of effort. Jim has put a lot of effort into this, as you see the program. So that's the only points I'd like to make. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. And I, I guess I would just like to add, Mr. Tepper has really spearheaded this project and he's done a, done a great job. Excellent job. And I think really on behalf of Westboro, the town should be very thankful for it.
Any other questions for discussion? Someone wanting to make the motion?
I'll make a motion. I recommend that the banners be flown consistent with the existing policy and that the VAB work with the town manager's office related to other elements of finalizing the program.
You want to put that as a motion?
I'm sorry, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I move to approve this program, the, the request to hang the hometown hero banners on the existing town poles with hangers beginning, I'm gonna have to count here, on May fifteenth through, I guess it would be August fifteenth. And I would add to that motion that with consideration to extend that time period, should there, for this first year, should there not be other requests for use of the poles during the next ninety days?
Mr. Second?
Let me just ask a question about the motion. So does that mean at the end of, at the end of the second ninety days, I guess, that, that's the longest the extension would be is that is to the second ninety days?
Yeah, I, to, to the speaker's points and having been involved in the Winter Lights effort with the Rotary Club, it does take a significant amount of effort, you know, because you're securing sponsors. You wanna, they wanna know that they're guaranteed a spot or their hometown heroes are guaranteed a spot on a particular poles. There's printing time, there's, it, there is a lot of work. So for any group that would be appropriate to be using the town poles, I feel like they need as much, as much lead time as this group would, you know, is being allowed. So I, I wouldn't, certainly wouldn't extend it beyond the fifteenth. But again, I think for the first year, that could be a consideration, but I just wanna be clear that we have a policy. We've agreed to the policy and as soon as we start making exceptions to the policy, then I kinda say, why do we have a policy?
So just for clarification, just so the board is, the Veterans Board is clear. So the motion is to have the banners up from approximately May fifteenth until August fifteenth and then reconsideration for further time?
If, if there isn't a request
Right.
to use the poles after August fifteenth, that the banners will stay up through November fifteenth, the next ninety days?
What I missed was when that request would have to be received by you in order for us to then put our action in place. Can't wait till the fifteenth. Call Chris and say, don't put the crew out today to take them down because we've got another fifty, ninety days. Wait, Christie, you gotta help me out.
Yeah, no, I would, I, I'll, I would be the one to receive the request, so I would certainly be working with Chris and keeping you updated if there's additional requests coming in.
And Ms. Williams, how long of a lead time would you need? Because obviously, like we've already discussed, there's a lot of work that's put into this, both installing and then deinstalling the banners. So what do you think for a timeframe?
You mean before you come back to the board?
Well, if, if there's another organization that needs the use of the poles.
What if another organization needs to submit a request?
I think it's in the policy, hang on.
How much lead time is required by the policy?
No less than three weeks before the banners request to be hung.
Yeah.
And that's.
That's in the policy.
That's the light poles, not the.
That's, that's for both. It's under how to request at West Main Street that they have to be, to have the less than three weeks before the banners request to be hung.
And so that's allowing for coordination of time with DPW to work.
Right.
Organize the crews to take them down.
So just, just so we're clear, just for the record, and I don't mean to be difficult whatsoever. But again, the VAB would really appreciate you considering the hundred and eighty days, stopping the program, you know, on August fifteenth really doesn't make much sense considering then you're only, you know, two and a half ninety days out from Veterans Day. So please, please do consider that in your, in your reasoning.
So we do a motion?
Just had a question.
Yes.
Christie, am I correct to think that this is something that will have to come before us every year in regards, or is this something, again, your office would just deal with each year? I mean, so if this, so if this is a new policy, we're kind of kicking the wheels for the first time here. Next year, if we say, hey, there's, you know, there's not been any other use of the poles, at that point, we could either adjust the policy or make an exception to extend.
So, so my, sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, you can, you can certainly review a policy anytime you find it's not working, but this one, having just been approved in May, I, I don't think that we can, we can't really make those determinations yet. I mean, it's not specifically gonna be on your agenda in a year, but certainly, you know, I think you're hearing now that there's some questions and, and I would expect that as the banners start to get used, you'll have other questions from other organizations.
My, my motion was specific for this year in terms of the time period and the extension. Again, the use of the poles and all, and the, the like brackets is new in terms of, we're going to start to see some different use of those versus the American flags that have been on there. And so I do think that it's community to allow for that.
Can I just ask a question on that?
Yes.
I guess to you folks is, is, so if, if we vote tonight to follow policy, ninety days giving you from May fifteenth to August fifteenth, I know it's not what you're asking for, but is that when you wanna start it or would you wanna go August fifteenth if, if we vote on ninety days?
Well, I think the most important thing is, and I think we would all collectively agree, putting aside. putting aside, aside that the time period is the program in and of itself, because that is really, truly the most important thing here for all the reasons that have been previously articulated. With regard, Mr. Johnson, to the time period, we are definitely asking for that May fifteenth or Memorial Day to Veterans Day time period. And again, we are more than amenable to, you know, helping out other organizations if we need to take down certain banners or if they need use of the polls. But, you know, we're all here very well-versed in government and politics, regulations and laws. Going back at some point to ask for an exception to a policy that was just enacted in May, I find that a little problematic. So, again, we would reiterate that we would ask for that Memorial Day to Veterans Day time period. But at the end of the day, the most important thing is the project. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, so the motion is give them ninety days, and then if there are no other requests, leave them up there through the time requested. What group is gonna come out and take the veterans off the polls?
I mean, I do know that...
Mr. Kio, that would be my question as well.
So, I wanna, so I know that the Cultural Council, I mean, there is
They've been talking about it.
Arts in Common event, and they have been talking about that, and I don't know that they plan...
Then we oughta just give them ninety days, one thing, okay.
So, so Arts in Common is in October, so, and I have no idea what they have, what they're thinking about this, but sort of logic for me would say that that would be a logical time period for them. So, so, and, and you, and you're right, it, it does create, it creates a problem that I don't think we wanna inherit, which is why I think we need to follow the policy.
Folks, we have one other member that would, our newest Veterans Advisory Board member, who is also a Westboro police officer, that would like to say a few words. This is Alicia O'Brien.
Hi, everybody. Alicia O'Brien, like Patrick said, thank you for having me and hearing us. I just, I think that it can't be said enough, and it might be redundant, but the, the whole point of this project is to honor veterans. And in a highly divided time, we are so divided right now, for whatever reason, whether it's politics or disagreements among family and friends, whatever it might be, the point of this project is to honor veterans, which doesn't happen enough. And I think that to display them downtown is such an important thing to do for, for the guys and girls that have served their country honorably, might have passed, you know. I, I, I don't think it gets said enough. So, I think that, that's one point that hasn't been addressed here, the purpose of it. And it's very important, and I think right now, we need it more than ever. I mean, we talked about it at the nine eleven memorial and how we are very, very divided, and during that time, we came together as a nation, as a community. And I think that this project could help Westboro come together as a community. That's all I have. Thank you.
Who else?
Patrick, well, before you, we have a motion, is there a second for that motion?
I will second the motion. And the reason why I'll second the motion is I think that the board has, right now, just so you all understand, we're struggling with, we've established a new policy. We haven't really even taken the training wheels off of using that policy. We wanna see how that policy operates and make sure that it's effective and equitable for the entire community. There's no, I don't think there's any question, at least from my perspective, from the board, of the importance of what you're asking. This is tremendously important, and we definitely see the value of it. The question is whether or not we wanna, I think, bend the policy that we just established for, for good reason, to allow this, I think what Shelby has proposed, and the reason why I am willing to second that motion is because I think it's a, a good compromise to, to get you, I think it's highly likely that it will, it will be that full period of time that you're asking for, right? I'm not hearing anything right now that perhaps is gonna, is gonna breach that, but it's possible, it's possible. But I, I think that this is a, a, a way to, again, provide equity, equity to the entire town and other issues that, other organizations that might wanna use those spaces.
And I'll just add to that, and other, other town boards and committees as well, such as Cultural Council, Library, for those programs, they may want to just watch around with it. Sustainable Westboro had mentioned these banners as part of their outreach and efforts at some point in time.
The VAB has come before us previously, and we've approved the Pleasant River Flags, but they look fantastic and beautiful downtown, but the Rotary, that has been approved by this board on an ongoing basis, without hesitation and recognition. And we do that at various times, three times during the year. So, I think there's no question, while this is an entirely different program, it requires a significantly greater amount of effort, investment and coordination. I think there's no question about, certainly from my perspective and from this board and our community's support of veterans.
I would just add to that, Ms. Marshall, in addition to the flags, I thought the signage on the Rotary looked fantastic.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, Sean.
I would just say that we either need to make it a hard ninety days or give them the full one hundred and eighty days. My concern is that by saying if nobody else comes along, then they can have the hundred and eighty days, is that then basically we're making somebody else out to be the bad guy and knocking them off the polls. And I don't think, I would be hard-pressed to think another group would come forward, which...
I have to amend my motion?
Well, before, before we amend the motion, I guess I would respond by saying that I, I, I don't necessarily think that another organization that would want to use the polls would feel like they were kicking the hometown heroes program off the polls, given the nature of the motion. I see this as, in effect, what we're doing, is we're saying, we're accepting their application in compliance with the policy for the ninety days. And in effect, we are pre-accepting an application for consideration for a second ninety days, but giving other organizations who want an opportunity to use that time period to provide an application as well, 'cause we are many months ahead of those time periods. And, and so I, I think it's a way, now, it might be that no one comes forward, but the nature of the request is also that this would be an annual thing for a hundred and eighty days. And, and again, we have a policy, there's a lot of discussion about length of time on polls as far as how many organizations may want to use it versus how much effort it is to take down and put up, and how often those change owners would happen. And that was settled on, you know, on, you know, on four months. So, we, we, you know, I guess we have the motion...
Yeah, I appreciate you making that distinction. Okay, thank you.
We can, we can both have the motion, and if needed, the second motion.
Sure.
Just a comment, I think that, I don't know if the motion actually works ninety, and then if no one, it's basically, 'cause like the, the question was asked the way the policy's written, it's three weeks beforehand, so if someone wanted it for October, the way the policy's written, they'd have to come in three weeks before, say, in September. But they couldn't do that if we already approved one.
My, my understanding of the motion is that it's May fifteenth to August fifteenth. If there's not a request three weeks before August fifteenth, they would get a second ninety day window, which would take them to November fifteenth, which would be after Veterans Day.
But if someone wanted it for a month in October, they'd have to come in July and ask for that month in October, then...
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's...
I mean, I know, I mean, this is kind of where the policy allows, you know, it's not, it's own set schedule, right? It's kind of allowing whatever...
You go up to ninety days, people may not want ninety days. This one is once more than ninety. Can I follow up with a second question?
Sure.
So, I probably should know this, but the American flags we have now, those are, I believe those are, don't have, the town owns those right now.
The town owns them.
And are they kind of by default, up there, are they subject to ninety days?
No, they're just up there. Yeah.
So, I guess the question I would have is, or a different way to do it, would it perhaps be that we grant the ninety days for this, but they almost become our default banners? 'Cause right now, if we grant ninety days, and they didn't wanna do it, then we put the American flags up, 'cause I think we've, we've kept banners up there. Again, I don't know how it works, just stuff that...
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's an interesting idea, you know. I, I, I would just say that it takes a significant amount of effort to do what the Veterans Advisory Board is, is suggesting. And, and then we've got potentially in the future inconsistencies with the National Ridd poll, so it's not part of our policy. I don't know if it will be, but we don't even have to contemplate that now, 'cause that could be subject to a different timeline. So, I guess, I think that the polls are there to, for everyone to use and that, you know, that where it's, it's an appropriate request. And I think that if we start kind of deviating from the policy, then I, I think we're just opening ourselves up to, to challenges. And I think that other groups that may be interested in, you know, I just want it up for the month of October, I don't know, or whatever, they've gotta be aware of what is the policy and who's already, who already, you know, kind of has their spot in, until what period, and they have to contact the town manager. And if they miss their opportunity, well, that's part of the plan for us, is in launching that project. So, I just, I think ninety days is a fair amount of time for, for this request. I just, you know, it's not about not honoring veterans, it's not about caring about people that have sacrificed far more than I could ever contemplate. It's about being equitable in the use of, of the town space for, you know, what is, is kind of prime real estate.
Patrick?
Yeah, and just one comment. I, I think that the way I was interpreting the motion is that during that second ninety day period, that a request could be made during any time during that period. That second day period, that second period is really just a, I'll call it, extra time. And if somebody makes a request a month into that second period, allow them to make that request and remove with the previous.
No.
I mean, it, it could be, but again, now we're getting into like, okay, you have like thirty days, and I mean, I think that's unfair to...
No, 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 I'm saying the first ninety days, rock solid stays. There's no other request that can come in. The second ninety days, if a, if an organization comes in and says, I'd, you know, we'd like to put, why are we holding them to that deadline of the first ninety days, twelve, you know, three weeks prior to that first ninety days? Why can't they come in thirty days after the original ninety days?
Well, because I, I, again, my, I understand the question is, my, the way the motion's phrased is that we're effectively saying that if there isn't another request, that we would be granting another ninety day window, which is the maximum we could request, which is in line with the request, that if we're gonna extend it past the original ninety days, then the intent would be, you know, for the program, for the efficacy of it, to give them that...
For the first year.
For the first year.
Okay.
Second ninety day, and we, and we can assess, and we've got a better sense over the next year how many town boards and committees, how many other organizations have an interest...
I would still support it.
...in launching the board, you know, the programs. Before we vote, there's a second component to this that was mentioned briefly, one second, that I, I wanna mention, was that the funding for this program would be by sponsors and from the families of, you know, veterans and active service members. It's my understanding that as a town board and committee, as a town, we're not allowed to fundraise. However, I believe that the Veterans Advisory Board does have a gift account. So, if individuals or business wanted to make a gift to support the program, we can't ask you for the money, but you are welcome to send money in to that gift account. Is that within the, is that within the lines of what we're...
Yes.
We got, we got time, so I'll have to let people know. You would like to add one additional?
I just wanted to clarify something. I believe I'm recalling my conversation with the DPW correctly from this past summer, where the understanding was that the policy that was in place, of course, wasn't even sure it'd been in place at that time, but it obviously was if you say May was your timeframe for approving it. He was understanding it was a ninety day period for the banners to be up. As he said, "I didn't wanna start putting up banners and taking them down every two or three weeks." The conversation has gotten to, somebody might wanna put them up for twelve days and put them up for nine days. The organizations you've mentioned most likely have a particular date they're trying to promote. And so, once that date's gone by, the purpose for those banners then, lessens. So, I, I'm quite confused. Certainly, we'll sort that out. But we still feel strongly that we, in order to go out and get these banners produced, solicit these veterans, let them know what's going to be happening, we need to have some timeframes that are committed. Can't be, well, it'll be up for a while, and if we get a vote, then we'll have to take them back down three weeks into the ninety days. Maybe that got clarified, and I missed it, Patrick. But I'm hoping that you'll come back to your motion and make it crystal clear what timeframes you're allowing, when we can apply for the second ninety days, 'cause we'll apply for that at the same time we apply for the first ninety days. So, you'll have an application in hand if that is in fact the case.
So, they do a broad motion?
Well, it's been seconded, so we would need
Okay, well...
a vote unless you wanted to amend it.
I'd be happy to amend the motion, whatever is easier at this point, quite honestly. I, I think that we need a, I'm gonna amend my motion. I move to approve the request to hang the hometown hero banners on the existing town poll lights with hangers between May fifteenth and August fifteenth.
Patrick, you seconded, you seconded, do you?
So, I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanna be clear on the motion. May fifteenth to August fifteenth is, is the motion by Ms. Marshall? Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Long.
You seconded, what? You seconded the original motion, so...
Right, and there's been a change to it, so, I mean, I, um...
And just for, for context, it, because it's very clear to Mr. Tepper's point, it doesn't leave this variation of like, you know, when is, when is another group potentially, you know, applying for this, when will we, when, you know, when will the VAB submit it? I mean...
I think this is, I think your second motion unfortunately is less flexible for them.
Well, no, it's actually very clear. It's actually very clear.
It is very clear.
It's ninety days.
Yeah, it is very clear.
It's ninety days in line to the policy.
And in three weeks before the end of those ninety days, they would reapply again, perhaps, and ask for an extension.
So...
Nobody else has asked, why not? We're not gonna apply polls.
Right, yours after...
So, again, just to, just to be clear, just so we all understand, and certainly the Veterans Board understands, and the veterans and their families understand, the timeframe proposed by Ms. Marshall is from May fifteenth to August fifteenth, and then the Veterans Board would have to reapply for another ninety day period to lead up to Veterans Day?
I think, I think that the board can clarify.
Wait, hold on a sec, Ms. Williams.
I think, but I think, I think the board can clarify the motion after you make your vote, if there's, if there's ambiguity. I don't think that you need to clarify every motion.
If another member of the board would like to amend the motion...
Well, the ambiguity should be explained to us before the motion is made, so we understand.
Mr. Tepper's actually talking to the board.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We're just trying to get clarity here.
So, I think that we've expressed here that, that we wanna provide with some, provide flexibility. I certainly support that. But with flexibility comes, you know, everyone's sort of up in the air. I mean, Mr. Tepper just said, we would submit our request for the next ninety days on the same day that we're gonna submit our request for the first initial application. That's not equitable across other town groups that may wanna use the polls. So, if we are, and I'm not saying that the Veterans Advisory Board would do that, but it's very possible, I probably would, it's a good strategy.
But that is, if I can interrupt, within your policy.
Yes.
I mean, I enhas the policy, I've read the policy, and it was clarified that the three weeks is only a minimum timeframe, it's not a maximum timeframe. So, it's not inequitable. If you put a policy in place, it's not inequitable.
Patrick, now, back to you, 'cause you seconded the original motion.
I'm a strong believer in policy. It's, it's, it's important. And this is a tough one. I really would like to get some runtime on the policy before we start to, you know, deviate from what we said, right? I mean, that's an important thing to do. But I also want to recognize the veterans, I mean, this is a super important topic. And to Shelby's point, there are a lot of other community groups out there and committees that also, you know, likely are going to want to use those spaces. And I want to be fair to them as well. That's why I really liked the first motion, because I felt that it provided some flexibility. I don't know, I almost feel like tabling this and having more time to discuss it and think about it and come back, it's, I don't... I'd like to hear from the other board members.
Any other board members of comments? You?
I mean, I think what's been pointed out here is that even though we adopted this policy in May, it actually is, what's been brought to us is absolutely someone can come in. There's nothing that says that you can't request two ninety day windows, I mean, it's not, it's not in there, maybe that needs to be clarified in our policy. I think what's coming to us here is a request right now to do one hundred eighty days for this year. I could want to do it every year, but this is for this year, to me, it's, I don't know that our policy says they couldn't be the first two in place. If I look at two there, it's town-sponsored information, this is a town board, they would be, they would be a priority now, there would be others. Cultural Council had mentioned, you know, but for example, this would take, by our policy, priority over, for example, the Rotary sponsoring lights, because that would be under number two, which is, that has a fundraiser for community events, as I interpreted, so... I hate the time we spend on policy, I guess that's what we do, but we spend a lot of time on policies.
That's our reason, that's why...
Yeah. And no, the point is here, the point is ninety days, the point is to let others, you know, ask for it, but it's, I guess, what's in front of us is we're getting asked to put it up for one hundred eighty days. For this year, I guess that's where I'm kind of leaning, is we have the request, it's off policy. I would be supportive of one hundred eighty days. I would make that motion if the other motion doesn't go, and let the board vote on it.
Yeah, and I would just mention that, you know, we talked about that there's forty polls, and I don't think in the future they need to be exclusive to one group, right? So, we could have two groups potentially with, in the future, you know, signs up, you know, nobody has to have all forty polls, but I think this is the first group before us there, making a significant effort here in order to get this jump started. And so, I would, although it is not entirely in line with the policy we just created, hey, I mean, you know, you're always looking to review your policies, even if they're only five months old.
I just want to clarify that this is not, the only reason that the group is before you is because they're asking for more than the up to ninety days. So we have approved another group, I just want, but that's something that we don't need to bring to you, because they're going to be up for ninety days.
Patrick?
But not within this period?
Right, not within this timeframe.
Patrick?
So I think, Ian, you made a very valid point, and it's kind of a loophole in the policy that allows us, I mean, definitely as a board, if we decide that we want to put more information in the policy to constrict this and say you cannot apply for, you know, more than ninety days, or that you cannot apply for two ninety day consecutive pieces, I think that's something that we look at in the future as a board to improve the policy. But right now, I think you make an interesting point that this doesn't exist today. So I think it's fair to, I'm not going to support the current motion.
So, so absent of the modification of the motion, we revert back to the initial motion that was already seconded, which is, the banners go up, summarize, the banners go up on May fifteenth for ninety days, absent any approved request within the timeframe of the policy, that period would extend for a second ninety day period through November fifteenth. Any further comment or discussion on that? Seeing none, I will call the vote. All in favor? Oh, wait to do a comment? Get the period in.
No, I will, I will support the original motion of the ninety, the additional ninety days, you know, I think you make some great points. However, I am going to ask this board to very quickly bring back forward the banner policy so we can clarify it. Because I think that a loophole has been presented, and we need to, we need to address it so that it addresses this going forward.
The policy specifically says time allowed, banners may be requested to hang for a period of up to ninety days. So, it's not in ninety day blocks, it's not giving people the option of separate blocks. A banner can be, according to the policy, I mean, this is different, what's before you, but according to the policy, it says a banner can go up for up to ninety days. So...
No, I meant, but I meant the reapplication, I mean, some great points have been brought up.
But it'd be beyond, right, the ninety days.
So I, I think some great...
A second request, a second consecutive request.
So I just, I think that some great points have been brought up tonight, and so that we're not circling on this for future boardists and circling on this in future years, we should take a look at that policy. And thank you for the opportunity and comment.
So, the motion before us, all in favor?
Well, I guess I'm confused with this motion, though, sorry. This is not, motion is not, is not, it's just I understand it, it's not for what the request was, which was for the, basically, one hundred eighty days, it is for ninety and the next ninety if...
Correct.
No one applies prior to, three weeks before the...
Yes.
So we can do this, vote on the motion because it's there, and we're supported or not supported, and then you can make your other motion.
I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Okay, I will call the vote, all in favor? All closed. The motion passes by a vote of three to two, finally present.
Can I still flop on the request from, so I don't forget it? Getting all the, for Shelby that we do bring this back, I did think there's...
Yes.
Some loopholes. Because we have the pieces, if I look at the way it's written now, the question would be, is it ninety days, and is that per year? Or is it ninety days and you can never do it again? I don't think it's...
Thank you very much for your time and patience with us.
Thank you.
We look forward to seeing you all on Thursday.
Absolutely.
Look forward to being there.
Yes, we do.
Okay. So next on the agenda is acceptance, number eight, acceptance of the Off Oak Street parcel, parcel ID number thirty-three, forty-one, eight, dash, zero. So, Christine, if you could introduce the topic.
So this is a request to finalize the acceptance of the Off Oak Street parcel. It's a sliver parcel that exists behind the DPW, it's currently owned by the state, with the disposition of the Lyman Street School that was always intended to come to the town of Westboro, since the DPW, since it abuts the DPW property, and we have done some improvements on that. We did have a vote, I believe, in twenty nineteen, where we petitioned the legislature to allow DCAM, or the Commonwealth, to give us the parcel, and then we followed up with an additional vote at your twenty twenty annual town meeting to authorize this board to accept the parcel. So the way the legislation was written was that if we don't accept the parcel by the end of the, if we don't accept the parcel by the end of this calendar year, then it would become available for fisheries and wildlife, I believe, to, to obtain the parcel from the Commonwealth, and they would no longer be able to give it to the town of Westboro. So...
Any questions or comments from the board?
I did provide you with the motion, but there's actually some, those additional agreements that were in your packet that are standard required with these types of dispositions have only one signature line, so it would be to further authorize the chair to sign related documents.
So I would move pursuant to the vote taken under Article fifteen of the March seventeen twenty twenty annual town meeting, held on June twentieth twenty twenty, to accept from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance, the parcel of land located off Oak Street and shown as parcel C five on a plan recorded in Plan Book eight ninety-three, page twenty-four, for general municipal purposes, and further to authorize the chair of the board to sign all necessary paperwork.
I'll second that. Moved and seconded, any further discussion, comments, or questions? Seeing, hearing none, call the vote, all in favor? Vote passes five to zero, five being present.
Thank you for all the materials on this, too.
Yes, thank you.
Wendy, do you want to watch them sign this?
So for the folks viewing at home, we take a couple minutes to sign documents, now's the time to go grab an ice cold drink, a refreshment. We don't have commercials on the government channel, so... We should talk about getting documents signed, it'd be something...
I can just put something on, if you want.
Like the Jeopardy thing.
Is some that you just signed, is that what it's...
Just have to sign the top, these are just, these are yours, these are for Alan.
He's doing his, so...
Give two.
Alan, you want to sign that one and pass that one along? Thanks.
Okay, not actually sure we're deciding.
It should just be on the top, I think I...
Just the top pages, the bottom.
So those two MIPA.
Does he have to sign that in front of...
Do I have to sign this one in front of Wendy or no?
She's right here.
No, but do I...
You don't have to, we can put it to...
I don't need, I can put it here and sign at the end of the meeting.
It's just those two, so she just signed them.
I tried, Alan, I'm sorry.
Trying to decide if my printed name or my signature is less legible.
I think you're all set, I'm very sorry.
Thank you.
The next one.
Okay. Okay, great.
She should save this next one, too, right?
Yep.
You should just sign for this.
Just save the next one.
Another one. Okay, so, we're back from the, from the signing music. Item nine on the agenda is to approve a floor amendment by the House Committee on Third Reading to House Bill thirty-nine seventeen, an act relative to the Board of Selectmen in the town of Westboro.
So, at town meeting, the, the town meeting approved changing of the Board of Selectmen to Select Board, and so you had three separate articles. So one was zoning, one was your bylaws, and then also the town charter. So the town charter amendment had to go to the legislature, and so there, they've offered an amendment, and the amendment is specific to two references in the charter that says "select men," which was not part of the legislation that went forward. And so they've added an additional section, really to clean up those two pieces of the charter that say "select men," and instead it will say "select board members." So this is all consistent with what we were trying to do in changing the name of the board in all three separate documents. But we do need to read the entire motion.
Ian?
Yes, I will move to approve the amendment as made by the House Committee on the Third Reading to House Bill thirty-nine, three-nine-one-seven, an act relative to the Board of Selectmen in the town of Westboro by striking out all after the enacting clause and inserting in place thereof the following. Section one, the charter of the town of Westboro, which is on file in the office of the archivist of the Commonwealth, as provided in Section twelve of Chapter forty-three B of the General Laws, is hereby amended by striking out the words "Board of Selectmen" each time they appear, and inserting in place thereof in each instance the following words "Select Board." Section two, said charter is hereby further amended by striking out the words "Board of Selectmens" each time they appear, and inserting in place thereof in each instance the following words "Select Boards," so Board apostrophe S. Section three, said charter is hereby further amended by striking out the words "Board of Selectmen" and inserting in place thereof the following words "Select Board." Section four, said charter is hereby further amended by striking out the word "Selectmen" each time it appears, and inserting in place thereof in each instance the following words "Select Board Members." In section five, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Thank you. Second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any questions, comments, or discussion?
I feel like we got reprimanded in class by the teacher.
It's the ready. One hundred times on the chalkboard.
Hopefully it doesn't impact our GPA.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call, seeing no additional questions or comments, I'll call the vote. All in favor? Motion passes five zero, five being present.
So Wendy just, well, actually, she's out, has it ready, certified, they'll take it to the legislature and move it forward.
So we have to sign anything, or?
Nope, she just has to certify your vote.
So she's got this vote?
Wendy will confirm that we're certifiable.
We've certified. Certifiable, yeah.
Okay, item ten on the agenda, next up is the committee handbook, and for those here, as well as the viewing audience, if you recall, many months ago, and this was one of the Select Board's goals for the year, was to create a committee handbook setting a set of guidelines with the intent, with a couple of intents, based on feedback from the public. One is to improve the transparency of the operation of the many boards and committees appointed under our authority, and operating under our authorities, the Select Board, to make, make information about the activity of boards and committees more accessible to the public, as well as to amend and evolve the process of how positions on boards and committees are filled, with an eye towards expanding opportunities for people to participate in the process, and thereby improving the range and diversity of voices and demographics that actively participate. As I said at the start of this meeting, there are almost four hundred volunteer positions across the boards and committees, and this is intended to provide guidelines. In that context, this is, this is a handbook, it's a set of guidelines. As we're presenting it right now at this point in time, it is not a, will not be a policy. And it is, and by no means a bylaw, right? So, as noted in the introduction document, well, it's hoped that other elected boards and other appointing authorities consider the handbook as a potential guideline for the boards and committees they create. The scope of this is really the boards and committees under the appointing and reporting authority of the Select Board. And so, sort of with that sort of introduction, I do want to know, also think, the original drafts of this, Lee Emery, former Select Board Member, Lee Emery, spent dozens, if not hundreds of hours working on, with me as well, to do the research and gather the information, put together and edit and revise the initial drafts. Prior drafts of this document were posted on the website, and we did... And we did receive public comment from a number of residents electronically. And, you know, someone dropped off a hand, a copy printed with handwritten notes on it. Though all of those comments were documented, incorporated into the record and considered and, you know, appropriately as we updated and edited the document as well. Subsequently, this has gone through a couple of reviews with myself, town manager, assistant town manager, and town council. Whatever we do, we want it to be compliant with, you know, the overriding rules and regulations, not conflict with the charter. And also to make sure that since much of this is about communications, that this document was in line with the communications policy that's been adopted and that's currently in the process of implementation. From an implementation standpoint, should we approve this tonight or at a subsequent meeting, the form it's approved in would be provided out to the committees. They would start to adopt the practices. We know there will be a transition period for committees get up to speed. We can provide assistance and guidance on doing that as well. And we would clearly expect over time to get some feedback from committees on what's workable, what's not. Are some of the guidelines here too onerous? Are other guidelines strong enough? Are they having the desired impact? At which time we could update the guidelines and, you know, and revise the handbook. There's no, I don't think we need a set timeframe for that expectation because, you know, committees meet monthly. We'd want to go through, you know, through a reappointment cycle next summer, et cetera, to make that happen. At some point in time, this may or may not ever be deemed. Other towns have made it official policies. I think they're, I think Westwood may, I'm not sure if it's Westwood, may have adopted it as a bylaw by reference. I'm not sure we need to ever go that way. But at some point in the future, the Select Board could decide to propose that or to adopt it as a policy. But the intent here is really to provide guidelines and expectations and some guidance there. And so on that lengthy introduction, not quite as long as the document. And the document went from thirty-nine pages to twenty-five, as I cleaned it up and consolidated it as well. So thanks for the help with that, everyone. I'll open the floor to questions and comments. I'll start from my left.
Thanks very much. Well, thank you. Thank you, you, and thank you to Lee for all the hard work on this and everybody else who was involved. And I think it was an excellent job. I think just to clarify for myself, you know, and I don't know if this is changes to the appointment process or we're more trying to clarify the appointment process, right? That reappointment is not automatic and that individuals should have the opportunity, even if there isn't a vacancy necessary when terms come up, to at least apply and be considered. That is really sort of what we're trying to communicate here. And I guess I'll use an example and then people can tell me how maybe I've gotten this wrong. So the Advisory Finance Committee, now I'll use that one because it's pointed by the town moderator, not by us. So nine folks, three-year terms, every year three people are up for reappointment in June. So three people come up for appointment in March. The town moderator, someone helping him, would post that there are three positions that are, individuals aren't leaving, but the terms are up in June and would solicit interest. Regardless of whether or not there is interest, if there is interest, those candidates would be considered by the town moderator. As, and not necessarily against those currently in the role, but as on their own merit. And then it would sort of be up to the town moderator what process they may want to involve to see if they can include that person on the committee. You mean he?
Correct. Correct. And the direction is that we want, you know, the hope is that people who want to get involved and have an interest in the work of one of the committees or boards to come forward and express their interest for a seat, even if that seat isn't currently vacant, knowing that when an individual comes up for reappointment, that that be a consideration. And the handbook goes slightly further, that if someone is at the end of their second or subsequent concurrent term, that there should actually be some active effort to recruit additional people. And this is about managing the balance between knowledge and expertise and continuity of a committee with the need, and there really is a need for committees over the long term to be healthy and to be, for the committees to be sustainable, to have a rotation of people in. You know, bring in fresh ideas, bring in new motivation, you know, bring in new representations from different parts of our community. And so it's not to discourage people from saying, hey, I want to serve a second term, please consider me for a second term. But we want to move away from, let's ask the person if they want to stay on the committee and if they do, great, they get reappointed. This is really setting the expectation that people can apply for positions that are going to be open because of the term, even if someone is interested in renewing, and that they would get consideration. And then if that, if an individual has served two or more consecutive terms, that there would actually be some effort to solicit and recruit. And it's not to say we want to kick people off or push people out, but just, you know, committees and the town benefit when there is some modicum of changeover over time and will create those opportunities for additional individuals to get involved.
Excellent, thank you.
So there are no term limits. I'll say that, you know, that wasn't, I know that was interpreted that way in the original document, it wasn't clear. So that's been clarified as well.
Thank you.
Shelby.
So first of all, again, thank you for all of the work that's gone into this. It's a great, I think it's a great tool and much needed guidance. And it really is a mechanism for engaging folks who might be hesitant to step into the water of joining a committee. So this is, I think, much needed. Couple of general comments, being that this will be available electronically, I noticed that there were some inconsistencies where we were providing links. So we're providing links in some cases, but not in other places where I felt like maybe we should be. So, for example, a link to our town charter, a link to the bylaws. There is a link to, to any of our policies, like our social media policy, which wasn't specifically referenced in here, at least where I thought it should be, I can find that page. So. And what I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, was that being a committee member, I don't think it's always clear, the, sort of the setup process of like, so one example is the committee should set up its website or webpage. How do they do that? Who do they contact? That seems to be missing here, unless I missed it. As well as who's responsible for, like, I know the town clerk posts the agenda to the calendar section, but the town clerk does not, that department does not post to the webpage. That's a separate step. So I know I'm getting kind of right into the weeds here, but I do think that that's when we talk about transparency and communication and engaging the community. If you're trying to drive traffic to, you know, okay, we've got this webpage, like Affordable Housing Trust, you guys did an amazing job. And so everyone was sort of like channeling there. And the agendas were there, the minutes were there, but those are, that's an extra step. So I don't know if, those are just a few of my comments. Overall, I think this looks almost ready for primetime. But I'm curious to hear the other comments.
So certainly as we post the document, we can place links and add links. One of the challenges, for example, with adding some links is that less likely the charter, but the town bylaws get updated and a new document at a new location on the website is posted, potentially twice a year, after town meeting and fall town meeting. So we also want to be, if something's easily findable and searchable on the website, is it better to, for someone to search for it and find the most recent version? Or run the risk that someone clicks a link and it's, it's the two thousand seventeen or the two thousand nineteen instead of the two thousand twenty?
Or might be to a landing page, so it's not this edition of the bylaws, but here are the bylaws. Because I do think that that's a particularly confusing aspect of using our website. That when you're trying to find information on the bylaws, I've been told by many that it's not easy to, it's not easy to navigate. So I would just, I fully appreciate what you're saying.
As far as who's responsible for, you know, doing the website posting, the document does state that committees can identify a secretary and get training and authorization to do their own posting, or there is a mechanism for them to request that items be posted through the IT department.
Okay, so if the IT department is.
Right, and that's, because that's part of the communications plan currently. And so again, is the implementation, correct me if I'm wrong on that, Kristi, but as the communication plan evolves and that implementation evolves, that mechanism may change.
Yeah, we would prefer that committees post their own and our office can support that if they can. But certainly IT would give them training.
So if that's clear and I missed it, I apologize.
But we can double check that.
And we're referring to, because we have a Selectmen's Communication Policy, which is different than, you said communications policy.
Plan.
Plan.
Right, so there should be a link reference to that plan, then?
Yes, I'm a little, going back to outside, I'm a little concerned with links within the document because I just think that links change, links go away. I know I get frustrated when I go places, even at work, and I have a link and it goes and I get a, you know, section four oh four, this document can't be found or whatever it is. Frustrates us. I just, I guess, I don't know that links are the best thing to put in a document because they, it seems that they.
As long as we're being, I guess I would say, as long as we're being consistent with what the actual policy is called and referencing. Like, so for example, the social media policy, I didn't see it referenced in here. Let's just make sure we're calling that out. If it's the communications plan, let's make sure that that's what we're actually calling it and that there's consistency, so it can be searchable.
We can double check references. Sean? Sorry, Ian.
Sean? Sorry, and I, no, I think, I think this is great and a ton of work. Like everyone said, thank you for that. I apologize here, but I can't find it from what you just said that we're in here that, and I maybe I missed it, but that it said that after someone serves two terms, it did be active. I saw it for chairs, but I guess I'm missing where, specifically to your point, if I heard it correctly, was that it's the job of the appointing authority to, like, actively encourage after two years. Sure, I probably missed, I just, I don't remember seeing it. The only thing I had was chairs.
Yeah. Might have been about the two year, the two term. So the top of page.
There's a piece about actively soliciting, but.
About reappointments are not guaranteed. Ninety days, shall publish seats.
I think that's great.
Right.
Because I didn't see it, I probably would have commented about the thing. It's not term limits, but whatever, but I think, I like what's in here, so. Well, I just wanted to make sure I didn't miss some. I didn't see it in here, so.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, we did, we did pull out the mention of two or more consecutive terms.
Perfect.
And it's more general that every, with every term.
Every term. I think that's the right way to do it.
We should post and allow.
I liked the language.
And where we settled on, I apologize, there have been about seventy-five revisions. So that it's, in the line there that's relevant is the appointing authority should consider balancing the makeup of the committee to ensure continuity with opportunities for residents interested in participating.
Yep.
And that's really the goal of altering the reappointment process.
No, I love the first bullet, too. We've talked about that. It's the reports are not guaranteed, nor are they determined solely by the committee members stated things. I think, fully supportive. I have no other questions. I'm ready to prove it personally.
Yeah, yeah, just a couple, a couple of questions on page four sixty or page two of the handbook states the Select Board encourages other elected and appointed boards and committees to adopt these guidelines. And you mentioned earlier when you were speaking that the expectation is that this would be walked around, they would do some review of it. Procedurally, and I'm not looking to create a tremendous amount of BERT bureaucracy here, but for example, since several committees fall under the, under the Select Board, we establish them. They are, do we need to have them review this and approve it through their committee and bring it back to us?
No. These are, for committees that, we're the appointing authority. We're providing this and saying, here are the, here's the handbook with guidelines on committee operations. Please follow it. If you have questions or concerns, let us know. We, you know, with the understanding it will take some cycles, you know, to, to get things in place. There are committees that don't have the presence on the website yet, so it will take time to get that set up and people trained, things of that nature. We'll also let them know if anything, if they feel there's anything in here that's too onerous or burdensome, they should let us know. Or if we see over time that there are things that might need a little more reinforcement. As far as other towns and committees, this will be presented to them, it's really up to them as, you know, those listed here, you know, the town moderator and the other elected boards and committees, it's up to them whether to even take this up for consideration. Our hope, our hope is that they do. Some may want to wait and see how it's working for our committees. Some of, some of the elected boards don't really have subcommittees that they create, so they might not feel the need. So we'll, we'll go from there.
So a couple of other things, I just, first of all, I should have started by saying this is a fantastic body of work and I really do appreciate it, the work that both you and, and Lee put into this document. On page four sixty or page three of the document, it talks about elected committees and appointed committees. I'm a big fan of lists. And as this is a, of lists, as this is a document that's a guide, a handbook, a job aid, so to speak, for these individuals, for people who might be considering to join a board or a committee, would it not be helpful to underneath those committees, underneath elected and appointed committees, to provide a list of the current appointed and elected committees so that they understand, hey, I'm interested in, I don't know, the Library Trust. What type of committee is that?
I guess I'd prefer to just point them to the website for the list of boards and committees, knowing that the appointed committees change.
Do they change in the nature from appointed to elected?
They don't change between appointed and election, and granted, the elected committees are set. But anytime, that means anytime we created, we create a committee, whether it's a standing committee or ad hoc for a specific initiative, we have to go in and update the handbook so the list is accurate.
Yeah, I realize, it's a point in time, right? It's a point in time snapshot. But it's just to provide people an idea, you know, there's a lot. When we looked, when I first joined the board, you had that list of, I don't know, there must have been thirty-five, forty committees that we all had to talk about. It's a big list, right? And there's a lot of other committees in town. So I just wonder if that would be helpful. That's all I'm.
It might. I guess I think it would be probably more helpful to have people refer to the list of boards and committees on the website because that gives, you know, a current list of where the opportunities lie. And then if they have interest, they click the link and they get the overview and the mission and the information about the committee.
I had the same thought, Patrick, but then being that this policy is really for the boards and committees.
Handbook, not policy.
I'm sorry. Sorry, thank you. Handbook is for the boards and committees that, where this board has jurisdiction, so to speak. Then I thought, well, by listing that, then to me, it confused everyone. So I was there, but then I was like, you know what?
I mean, I'm happy with the document as is. I'm just trying to. I, I, I mean, I'm happy with the document as is, I'm just trying to look for if there's some refinement on it. I guess, um, my final comment is really one that Shelby, as you were speaking, kind of made me think, and it's, it's kind of tangential to this in regards to our policies and how they're located. I, I find it very difficult to find information in policies, I would love to see a, see a, see a single policy page with every policy in the town, a matrix, so to speak, of, of, hey, here's the select board policies, here's the town manager policies. Instead, I find myself, maybe there's something that exists out there, but I find myself going to the select board page, to the select board policy page to find our policies, and then if I need to go to jump to another policy, I have to jump to their page to go find their policy. So I'm just wondering, I, just something to think about, future discussion and consideration, if, and Kristy, you can certainly correct me if I'm wrong.
Well, there's one policy page on the website, so I guess I just wouldn't, we can talk about this later, but I don't know what policies you're jumping to off of that page.
Yeah, you just go to the select board page, and there's a select board policies, and there's our thirty-five, forty policies. Right, so there's, I think there's other policies that we talk about that are not select board policies specifically.
You'd have to show me, I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referencing.
Okay, yep. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so we, we do have a request to sanity check cross-reference, the communications plan, policies, and when presented electronically, links to sections of the website to help.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, it was a suggestion on the links, but I think that there are pros and cons, so.
Okay.
I mean, I'll, you've worked on this enough, I'll leave it to your discretion as to, I just, it's, it's inconsistent, that's, I think that's where, so there's, there are links in some places where there aren't in others, and I wasn't sure that I understood the basis of that.
Because I, I think, I believe most of the links we put in were links to the mass.gov website.
Right.
Which are the reference landing pages for open meeting law, conflict of interest, and other rules and guidelines that we're supposed to follow. But we could, we can look at that, I guess, the, the, the question is, would you like, would you like us to do that double check on communications plan reference and policy reference, policy name references? And bring it back for the formal vote, or would you be comfortable with a motion saying approving pending, you know, cleanup of any inconsistencies with references to the communications plan and other policies?
The communications plan is really more of an internal document, so I, I'm, I'm not remembering where it's referenced in here.
That's what she's asking.
Yeah, I'm just not sure that, I mean, we can talk about that, but I just, I don't know that that makes sense.
I don't believe that the social media policy is referenced.
The social media policy is referenced, but not in that list, and so that maybe, it maybe should be added to that list.
It's on page nineteen, it says, in accordance with the town's social media policy, and not to be too wonky about this, it just should be capitalized.
Oh, okay, we can make that change.
So, I don't know, I, I just, if, if the board is comfortable in voting tonight, that, that's fine, I'll, I'll support that. I think that we'll probably find some things we've got to clean up by the nature of, not the policies, excuse me, the handbook, if I say that one more time.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to prove the committee handbook as presented.
Seconded. Moved and seconded, any additional comments?
I, I guess I would.
With, with the correction of the typographical error.
Well, and.
Just come back with any changes.
Yeah.
Right.
I think, I think, I mean, I think what we're talking about here is, is, is some things just to follow up on, but I don't, I guess in my mind, we're making the motion. It doesn't, it's not material, it holds up doing it, but we expect that there'll be those slight.
I will, I would agree, it's a living document.
Yes.
Okay. Moved and, you comfortable?
Yep.
Okay, then moved and seconded, all in favor? Motion passes five zero, five being present.
Like you said, living and not living and breathing, never seen a document breathe before.
Can you just send me the comments that you had that you wanted us to clean up, just so I can clean it up?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Krista, we can, we can do that.
Deadline passed.
Okay, next on our agenda, item eleven, concurrence of the select board with town manager for appointment of disability commission members.
Yep, so.
That's a high Q to have Kristy take the floor.
Okay, um, so at our annual town meeting on May fifteenth, we created a disability commission, um, consistent with Mass General laws, chapter forty, section eight J, um, so that actually set up a disability commission consisting of seven members, and the, the appointment of the town manager with the approval of the board of selectmen, select board. And so the majority of the members need to be, need to identify as having a disability. One member can be a family member of someone who is disabled, um, and then one is an appointed or elected official. And so, um, we have been soliciting, uh, interest, and so we're really happy to, to receive all the interest that we got. So you, we have four applicants for five, the five, for, of, four of the five openings, uh, for members who identify as having a disability, and those are before you tonight for your approval of my appointment, um, and that's Heather Crump, um, is it Isley, Sky? Sorry?
Eileen.
Eileen, sorry, Sky McKendrick, Leslie Leslie, and James Rogers, um, and they all have different terms, so that's in your motion. And then as a town official, um, I've appointed Bill Heslett, so he's the town's assistant, um, building commissioner. Um, as you all know, our community development director is our ADA coordinator and has previous experience working closely with an ADA commission when he previously worked in Lexington. Um, and so we're appointing his assistant to, to be the appointed official on the committee, and so Fred will work with him, you know, as a startup, and then, you know, he'll continue on the committee. And then we continue to have the one opening for immediate family members, we do have several letters of interest, um, so because there's only one opening, we want to meet with them and, and, you know, choose one, so it'll come before you end at a later time.
Thank you.
Is, um, is Bill a voting member?
Yes, yep, so one member is an appointed or elected official.
So they're all voting members?
Yes.
And remind me again, Kristy, does the full committee have to be appointed before the committee can begin work?
Uh, they could begin work, so they'll have five, after tonight's vote, they would have five of the seven.
I'm excited about this, I think this is fantastic, so.
Would you like to make, do you have a question or?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Go ahead and make the motion.
I'll, I'll move to concur with the town manager and her appointment of the following individuals to, to the disability commission. Heather Crump for a one-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Eileen Sky McKendrick for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Leslie Leslie for a two-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. James Rogers for a two-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, and William Heslett for a three-year term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion, questions, or comments? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor? Five to zero, the motion passes, thank you very much, and to those who step forward for these roles, thank you very much for stepping forward and joining this new committee, commission, and good luck as you proceed with your work.
Follow the handbook.
Yes, and we'll get you a copy of the handbook. Okay, next on the agenda is item twelve, a request for appointments, um, Madison Smith to the spirit committee.
Yep, so she, so Madison Smith has requested appointment to the spirit committee. Per the, the bylaws, it needs to be noted that she's not a resident of Westborough, but she is the owner of Vivacity Nutrition, and so you're able to make appointments of individuals who are not residents, um, who you deem as having, um, the skills or abilities to, to serve on the committee.
I, I will add that, um, is the committees reconstituting and rejuvenating itself with these new appointments, that they're out, and they've got, um, many ideas for activities and for supporting other activities in the town. And I know there's always a consideration when we make an appointment to a non-town resident, to a committee. I feel as a, a member of the town's business community, however, um, that provides a good liaison to, who's active in the business community, it's a good liaison to the business community, um, who would be asked and hopefully would support the activities of the spirit committee. I'll go ahead, I'll make the motion, I don't, don't want to do that, but I move to appoint Madison Smith to the spirit committee for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded, any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call the vote, all in favor? Vote passes five to zero, five being present, and so thank you to Ms. Smith for stepping up in voluntary, becoming active in the spirit committee of our town. Next on the agenda, lucky number thirteen, is a request, um, to appoint a select board member to the library building committee.
Yep, so, uh, the library building committee has been reconstituted, and they're looking for a select board member. There are other representatives from the library board of trustees, the advisory finance committee, the municipal building committee, and, and residents, um, and so they are looking for a representative from your board.
Okay. All over the floor to comments, I'll start at my left.
Um, you know, I don't know what, what anybody else is thinking, I, you know, I would be willing to consider an appointment to this committee, um, if, if other members who are amenable to that. I think it is a very interesting opportunity right now in front of us, we really need to, it's been a while since we originally approved this plan back, and I think it was, you know, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen. So, um, you know, there's going to be a lot of, of work done over the next, you know, ten or eleven months before fall town meeting, for us to really review and, and go back over everything that had already been looked at, and I would be more than willing to, um, to help with that and, and help that committee.
Any other interest? Thoughts, comments?
Well, so I'm very supportive of Sean, um, being our representative. I, um, I want the board to know that I was willing to step up as well, I really enjoyed being part of the school building committee. The field's experience has been very interesting, and a little bit of the Hastings work when I, I joined that committee at that time. I do think this is, this project comes at a very interesting time, um, in, in terms of, uh, this project against other capital projects and budgets, and as we come out of the pandemic, so I think having, um, you know, a, a strong voice from, from this board, you know, appropriately strong voice is really important, so, but I'd be very supportive of Sean.
Ian, Patrick?
Ditto.
Ditto. Okay.
Ditto, ditto.
Then I will entertain a motion.
So I'll make that motion, um, I move to appoint Shana Kia as the select board's representative to elaborate building committee for an indefinite term.
It's like a prison sentence. It's called life without parole. I second that.
Moved and seconded? Any further discussions, comments? I'm not, I'm not going to call it Sean's to link that out.
Moving on to the votes.
All in favor? Motion passes five zero, five being present.
Thank you, thank you, Shelby, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
So next on the agenda is the town manager's report, which we did not get electronically in the packet, but we do have in front of us, so.
Yeah, I apologize.
Turn the forward to Kristy.
So in terms of updates, uh, related to the American Rescue Plan funds, um, we, as, as you're aware, we did receive proposals for several projects from, uh, departments and boards and committees. We went through those and we identified which of those were eligible according to the latest guidance, and then we sent out another sort of second round of proposal forms for additional information that we've requested. In addition to that, we've asked departments who had eligible projects to review, um, the most recent webinar, which is related to the reporting requirements, some of the projects are, have a, they all, there is a significant amount of reporting. Some have more reporting requirements than others, and so we want people to understand the commitment if they were awarded the funds. One thing that we're looking at is, um, potentially hiring a consultant who can help identify eligibility, because this is really different from the way the CARES Act works, the way the CARES Act previously worked was that the money came down through the federal government, through the state, and so there was, um, someone to, to work through eligibility with at the state level, and that's not the case, uh, currently with the ARPA funding. And so that's something that, um, a lot of towns are looking at, and some have already started working with. Um, and then we're continuing to watch state and federal opportunities that may fund some projects that are coming down. There's the Jobs, um, Act that could fund some infrastructure projects that have been proposed.
Can I ask a question, and I apologize because I shouldn't know this, but when we get to this whole process and we have multiple things, is it, where, where's the final approval lie for these ARPA projects? Is it town meeting, or is it through the board?
This board.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, so as a reminder, the, so as a reminder, the process would be that, or that we've proposed is that the finance team will make a recommendation, and then it will, similar to, um, their financial policies, it would go to the AFC, and then they would.
Come here.
Come to you, so.
And, and the, the process and the ranking is modeled after the capital planning expenditure process.
Yeah, naturally.
Kind of, kind of.
There's criteria and there's, it's not as formalized, but we've established criteria that we're using to.
Sure, yeah.
Help prioritize.
No, that's, that's where my question came from, because sitting on capital expenditures, there's projects that are also being, that could come through the ARPA, but we have them on our capital expenditures, knowing that would go to town meeting for approvals of the capital project, as, as were my question, thank you for clarifying, so.
There's, because they haven't issued final guidance, um, there's a risk to using that money too soon, and that's what most municipalities are finding. And so I think a lot of people, or a lot of departments, you're seeing the proposals for the ARPA funds, but also through, coming through the capital plan, because the timing of that isn't really known.
Thank you.
Um, the Waste Management Task Force, uh, the public, Jen Sullivan, Public Health Director, and Leah Talbot, our Finance Director, and I have continued to meet with them to identify next steps related to their proposal of a curbside pickup program. We've also met with representatives of DEP, and then another community has a similar proposed program. Um, and so we'll continue to work through that before it comes to this board. Animal control municipal agreement, we're currently in our fourth year of having an IMA with towns of Grafton and Shrewsbury related to ACO services. The last renewal is a six-month renewal, so it actually ends at the end of December, and that was to allow us time to revisit the agreement and discuss how we are going to move forward. Uh, so we're currently meeting with the other towns regarding next steps. Because everything obviously is on a fiscal year, we'll likely renew this agreement for the remainder of the fiscal year, but it will, whatever changes we would make would go into the new budget. Electricity rates, national grids, winter electricity supply rate took effect on November first, uh, so the six-month residential price is fourteen point eight two one cents per kilowatt hour. So by comparison, Westborough's are ten point four two five cents per kilowatt hour for the standard plan, twelve point five eight five for the green plan, and then nine point seven oh nine for the basic plan.
So in all cases, well, much better than.
Well, well, so if, if I may interject here, so, um, if you're not getting phone calls to extend the warranty on your car that you may or may not own, or, um, rate improvements on your credit cards, where they're trying to steal your identity, you are likely getting phone calls and letters about signing up for cheap electricity rates. Many of those calls and letters will claim a lower price for a limited period of time, after which the price may skyrocket, and you will find yourself trapped. Some of those actually charge you to leave the plan. And so should you be interested in your electricity rate and, um, and have concerns about what you're paying, please, on the town website, you can reach the information about our community aggregate program or call town hall, and we can share the information so you know that you are getting a good rate, um, and that you're not being scammed, and so. I would also ask that this information, it's very positive, if it can be shared through social media and the website, that would be great. Call it, call it out to people's attention.
Um, the October Employee Excellence Board winner is Sarah Cunningham, uh, who's a library staff member. Uh, and then going into department updates, uh, the community development update, new businesses in town are Convenient MD, which is now open. Racks manufacturing, backup house is now open, and mineral tractor is open. Upcoming businesses is Bob's has filed a building permit to open in West Meadow Plaza. With programs, the EDC has awarded eleven thousand dollars to six Westboro businesses, so includes the Art and Frame Emporium, Azur Stained Glass Studio, Central Mass Podiatry Component, Sources International, Park Street Dental, and Sheer Transformation Salon. We had great success with the Main Street Trick or Treats, we had twenty-plus businesses participate, and we're, we're estimating over six hundred trick-or-treaters. And then the Holiday Stroll is coming, we have eighteen businesses committed so far. Le Duke Arts and Antiques Ribbon Cutting was at five thirty on, on, is that five thirty on November tenth? CMR PC's quarterly meeting is at seven on the tenth, and then the Metro West Chamber Annual Meeting is eleven seventeen at six P M. The Conservation Department, congratulations to Sherri Wittes, who's our Conservation Director, who's received a Fundamentals for Conservation Commissioner certification from the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissions. And then also Leah Wallner, our new Conservation Assistant, has, has started and is doing well. The Conservation Department's also working on the Zwicker Farm and Dayprey Property land plans with Land Stewart Incorporated. The DPW is welcoming two new employees, Kyle Grendel as our new tree warden, and Nathan Knox as a laborer in the Highway Division. They've also installed an improved crosswalk at East Main Street between the post office and the Highlands. They revitalized the municipal parking lot behind South Street Diner, and then they worked on the installation of the Blue Star Memorial, Fall Street sweeping, storm response, and hydrant winterizing. The Health Department has been improving for twelve hundred pediatric COVID-19 vaccines, and that's for ages five to eleven, so they're working to plan clinics, vaccination clinics. They have also been notified from the Department of Public Health at the state level that contact tracing collaborative has ended, but we've entered into a grant with the Greater Boroughs Partnership for Health to hire an epidemiologist and a public health nurse that can help with this. And then we've also ordered and received binex now testing kits for the fire department, and they can use this to test first responders exhibiting symptoms. In the Police Department, they've participated in active bystandership for law enforcement, ABLE, which the chief came and talked to you all about. Two officers attended a week-long train-the-trainer event to become certified to instruct the agency. This program requires law enforcement agencies to the ten ABLE standards. They receive letters of support from We Care, myself, and then also the Diversity and Inclusion Committee, and then the program requires that every officer attend an initial eight-hour training in-house, and then yearly two-hour refreshers. That's my report.
Thank you very much. A lot, a lot happening.
Going on.
Accomplished, thank you. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. My computer went to sleep.
I approve the approval of the September twenty-first minutes with the Board of Health.
Second. Moved and seconded? Any questions, comments? Hearing, seeing none, all in favor? Pass five zero. Will I continue with the motions?
Sure, and I'll move the approval of the September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes to the joint meeting with the planning board.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any comments, questions, notes? Patrick, was that, oh, you were just voting early.
No, I was just moving the microphone.
No worries, okay, call the vote, all in favor? Five zero, approved to vote a five zero.
Move the approval of the September twenty-third, twenty twenty-one tri-board budget meeting.
Second. Moved and seconded, any comments or questions? Seeing, hearing none, call the vote, all in favor? Minutes approved by vote of five zero, five being present.
And I would move to approve the minutes of the West, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one select board meeting.
I'll second. Moved and seconded? Any comments or notes? Seeing, hearing none, all in favor? Passes five zero, five being present. Did we have? Did we have minutes for the twenty-nine? Because it wasn't on the.
Did they not make it in?
They did not make it into the packet.
They didn't.
They did?
Oh. There's just, there's no.
Okay, oh, that's right, okay, so they were out of the.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one, as joint meeting of the board, select board and planning board.
I'll second that. Sean, seconded? All in favor? Passes five zero, five being present. Okay, next we are on to issues and correspondence, and I will go from left to right, Sean.
Oh, thank you. I will just mention, and as I'm sure, I just got to say this because I'm first, this Thursday, the Veterans Day activities begin at eight-thirty at the Knights of Columbus. I'm also at eleven A M. in front of the Forbes Building, there will be the Blue Star Memorial, and I, you know, I'm really looking forward to these events on Thursday, and hopefully we'll get a lot of participation, so thank you.
Shelby?
Thank you, Sean. I also want to point out that we have Kindness Week coming up, if you mentioned that before, but that is November thirteenth to the nineteenth. You can find more information at westboroconnects.org, and Kristi touched on this a little bit, that the downtown lighting and holiday stroll will take place on Sunday, the twenty-eighth, and information is already on social media, and I think there's information on the town website, just haven't seen, been out there to check it out yet.
Okay, great. Patrick?
Yeah, I'll just mention that the food drive with the police, fire, and youth and family services to benefit the free and little, free little food pantry at St. John Street is Sunday, ten to two, at Stop and Shop, and application for the free holiday store are now available at the Youth and Family and Library for families in need. Gift cards, purse project, and wrapping paper from the schools driver are what's being needed.
Okay, Ian?
Along those same lines, this Saturday is the scouting for food, annual scouting for food drive, and hopefully folks got hangers on their doors last weekend. The Cub Scouts in town will be out with their parents to pick up those, so people put them out by nine A M. They will be collecting those, last year, I think they did over eight thousand pounds of food for the Westboro Food Pantry, and they're hoping to exceed that. There is a list available, too, that highlights those things that are preferred by the food pantry, things that they need, but they will take anything. One comment always is, please don't give them anything that, that is expired, because they have to throw it out. Second is just that we've, we've been meeting weekly now on capital expenditures, so we've pretty much gone through all of the meetings with the various town departments, and we are in process now of, or will be later this week, of putting together our ratings and then meeting to start discussing that. So everything is progressing as planned, anticipation for our annual cycle. And the final thing I have is, this coming Sunday, Westboro Community Land Trust is offering a walk on Dayprey property, so for folks that are interested, I don't remember the time, I think it's one to three o'clock in the afternoon, but I think you can go to the Westboro Community Land Trust website to see that, but great opportunity for folks to see this newly acquired parcel and see the, the features of it and the trails that are out there, so hopefully people can attend, and they're going to, people that are attending, parking will be in the fails school parking lot. That's all, Ian.
Okay, and so for myself, one item I have had a couple of conversations, as folks watching me and who follow our meetings know that several meetings ago, we had a joint meeting with the Board of Health, this sort of a status check update with related, with COVID-19 related issues, and the question received is, when will we be meeting again with them? And sort of, you know, would we be going back to regular meetings like we had last year? And so last year, when we were meeting regularly with, jointly with the Board of Health, was a period of time where things were, what we were learning was coming in and rapid succession, like drinking from the fire hose, and the situation was changing very rapidly on a continuing basis, and so there was a need. The, you know, the Board of Health has its responsibility. At times, they may look to guidance or input from the select board. At other times, part of the role is to be advisory to the select board. So there is regular communication between the Health Department and the Town Manager's office, and so, you know, it's not that, us not having joint meetings doesn't mean that we're not on top of it, and not keeping an eye on the situation, it means that, you know, if and when the Board of Health is looking for input or wants to ask us to consider taking action within our scope of responsibility, at that point in time, we would come together for a meeting, and we would have a purpose, a specific purpose to do so. And so that's, you know, where we are with that process. If people are interested, I do encourage them to watch and follow the Board of Health meetings, because just as it was last year, this year, there are COVID-related issues that come before the Board of Health, that are within their domain, that they will act to make decisions on, that we would not, as a select board, be involved with directly, so that was all that I had. So on that note, I will entertain the motions to move into executive session.
Sure, I move to enter into an executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A two, to, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, and under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, A six, to consider the purchase exchange, lease, or value of real estate.
And I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining position. We will not be reconvening an open session after the executive session. Can I have a second to the motion? I'll second it. Okay, moved and seconded, I'll take a roll call vote, Patrick?
Welch, yes.
Ian?
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
Keo, yes.
Edinburgh, yes, by vote of five zero. We are adjourned into executive session, I want to thank Westboro TV for their ongoing coverage and support of these meetings, and for those of you watching at home, appreciate that as well. Thank you, have a good evening.